Welcome, everyone. This is a special public hearing of the Court of Common Counsel. I'm here, Council President Glensland Thames, along with my colleague, Assistant Majority Leader John Gale. We will have other members joining us momentarily, but we want to get started because we do have public comment at 6:00 PM. And again, due to federal HUD guidelines, we needed to put together this special public hearing to ensure we were adequately vetting the project and were consistent with timelines, if you will. And so with that, I will yield the floor to Erin Howard from Development Services to do a brief presentation on the proposals that are before us today, which is a resolution requesting authorization to amend the existing ground lease with 315 Tremble Street Associates, LLC for three parcels of land located at 315 Tremble Street, as well as a resolution requesting authorization, the mayor, to submit a Section 108 loan guarantee program application for the renovation of the Hilton Hotel at 315 Tremble Street. So with that, I will allow you a few minutes to give a brief overview, and then we will allow people who are here in favor or against it to come up to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Thames. Thank you, Councilmember Gale, for being here tonight. My name is Erin Howard. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the Department of Development Services. Today, I'm here with consultant Kevin Grims from NDC, who's going to quickly do a brief overview of what the 108 loan application is. It's a loan. It's not a grant. And we're going to talk about how that applies to the Hartford Hilton, and then all of that ties into the amendments that we actually need to make to the ground lease. So Kevin, if you could...
Good evening, Council President. Councilmen. My name is Kevin Grims with the National Development Council. National Development Council is a national nonprofit economic development advisory company. We work with hundreds of communities and cities around the country with their economic development programs and initiatives. One of the common tasks that we're involved with is underwriting both on a programmatic and financial sense the Section 108 loans. The Section 108 loan is what it is. It's a loan, and it allows the cities the opportunity to borrow off of its community development block grant program. The city can borrow up to five times that dollar of their annual block grant line of credit. The city has productively used the 108 before. In fact, there was a $7 million 108 loan that was made to the Hartford Hilton in 2010 for refinancing of an existing credit facility. Since then, the management of Hartford Hilton has made significant capital improvements, and it has been profitable, and it has been current on the current loan that the city made to it. Again, in 2010, it was used for refinancing an existing credit facility. At this point, the hotel is seeking to retain its Hilton flag and license agreement with Hilton Hotels. And as a matter of course, to retain that flag, it needs to do an additional capital improvements, despite the millions of dollars of capital improvements that it has made. Specifically, those capital improvements involve bathrooms and furniture and fixtures in all 393 rooms. That's about $4.5 million of capital improvements, in addition to some soft costs and professional fees. The proposed loan amount is $4,750,000. The current loan has a balance of $5.3 million, so with this additional loan, the balance will be $10.3 million. We've done an initial review of the financial statements of the hotel, and we have determined that the project is profitable. It shows enough income to be able to support the existing debt and the proposed debt. What is key going into the future is for the management of the hotel to also have sufficient income to be able to expense for repair and replacement reserves, so can adequately fund future capital improvements and doesn't need to seek additional debt in the future. So there, again, the borrower is current on the existing 108 loan. It shows, based upon its projections, its ability to absorb future debt service and also fund reserves for repair and replacement. And one of the other key elements to this financial plan of action is the existing 108 loan has a $1,750,000 balloon payment in 2030. So that would be halfway through the new term of the new loan. So it's also critical for management to escrow and put aside funds in order to make that balloon payment in 2030. So it's a 20-year loan, 4% interest. The improvements will take place in the next year, and I think, based upon those capital improvements, it will impact occupancy slightly in the next year. So the debt coverage ratio and the cushion is a little bit tighter next year than it will be after all those capital improvements are made. As a result, we're proposing that the loan is structured on an interest-only basis for the first five years, and then it will self-amortize with principal and interest payments years 15 through 20. One of the other things of note is the fact that the current ownership, since the time it acquired this hotel in 2004, has done a substantial amount of investment and invested in excess of $20 million of equity. There have been operating challenges with the hotel, but to give the ownership and the management credit, they have withstood those challenges, and right now, based upon these capital improvements and the ability to retain the Hilton flag, adjust well for the future of continuing to operate that hotel, not only the Hilton, but management and ownership also runs and operates the adjacent Marriott Hotel. I'll be happy to take any questions.
So just to finish, this is going to be consistent for the amendment to the ground lease. Right now, the city of Hartford has a ground lease with the Hartford Hilton. We went into a ground lease with them with the original 108 loan in order to work with them with maintaining that we are in first position of the original loan, that we couldn't secure any more than the $7 million original debt on the property. And so the term of that loan is coming up in 2022, '23, and so in order for us to do this next loan, we would have to amend the ground lease to reflect everything that you just heard.
Thank you for that brief overview. So with that, is there anyone here who is speaking in favor of item number one? In favor? In favor? Anyone here speaking against item number one? Okay, that item is closed. Thank you. Item number two, which is a resolution requesting authorization to the mayor to submit a Section 108 loan guarantee program application for the renovation of the Hilton Hotel at 315 Tremble Street. Anyone here speaking in favor of item number two? In favor? Again, one last time, in favor? Anyone speaking against item number two? One last time, against? Okay, that item is closed, and I just want to, again, reiterate that this was a special meeting for these two particular items because of the timeline and public posting and requirements of the federal government. However, both of these items are still in the Operations Management Budget and Government Accountability Committee, and further due diligence and vetting will occur prior to a council vote. And the next meeting of OMBGA is Monday, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, June 15th at 5, July. July 15th at 5:30. That is Monday, July 15th at 5:30, right here at 5:15 Main Street in the City Council Chambers. We will be taking up these two items in council committee. So this is not the last time folks will be able to hear about this and provide commentary, and we look forward to the Development Services team and others joining us at that meeting as well. So with that, that concludes our special hearing. We will reconvene momentarily for our 6 o'clock public comment. Thank you. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started with our monthly public comment section. Thank you all for joining us, and thank you to everyone who's viewing and at home. A reminder that as you come to the podium, please remember to state your name and your address for the record. We have a few individuals on the agenda tonight to speak. So without further ado, we'll get started. We do not have a regular time clock here, but Assistant Majority Leader will keep time on his phone. Everybody is allowed three minutes. So again, please be respectful of people's time tonight. So without further ado, Mr. Stephen Kleinman.
I'm here to comment about the fireworks noise that's existed for the past couple of weeks. I know Hartford has a noise ordinance. I know we celebrate the Fourth of July, and it's tradition to shoot off firecrackers as the city spends money on fireworks display, but there's no need to have fireworks go on until 1:00 in the morning. I don't blame the police department. The police department does not have enough resources. There has to be a way to cooperate with other towns, because I'm sure it's waking up children and keeping elderly from sleeping in surrounding towns of Hartford. I think we have to beef up the police department resources, but those are issues for the campaign. I know things, quality of life issues, as evidenced by what went on in New York City during the tenure of Mayor Giuliani and Mayor Bloomberg, that if you don't stop these small things, they'll escalate, and pretty soon, property values will go down, the assessment rolls will go down, taxes will go down, and we'll be in a vicious death spiral. So I urge those who have the authority to do something about it and preserve our property values. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight and expressing your concern. We'll have someone from our staff follow up with you. Next up is K. Moore Harrington.
Hello, K. Moore Harrington, 670 Hillside Avenue. I'm here this evening talking about Nightfall, which I think most folks know Nightfall is this amazing public show that happens in October in Hartford, and it moves throughout our different parks. Nightfall exists to highlight how incredibly amazing and wonderful our city is, and we are having our auditions. Our auditions so far have pulled in a ton of beautiful human beings, none of whom from Hartford. So as Hartford, that is as wonderful as we are, we exist, Nightfall exists, to celebrate and showcase our city. Very often, folks in our city don't realize how much we are trying to pull them in. We do not care if you have a felony. We don't care if you've got a GED. We have a paid gig for people who can move their bodies beautifully. And I'm here reminding City Council that Nightfall is this wonderful nonprofit that does great stuff in the city of Hartford, so please send us your people. And if you know anyone who is looking for a temporary job, who for all of those barriers cannot find access to those temporary jobs, send them to us. We've got a beautiful experience for them in the city. Thank you.
Think you have a follow-up? If he doesn't ask the same question, I'm going to ask him.
I'm just wondering if you've communicated with the Cultural Affairs Commission?
Yes. Yep.
Can you just make sure, I don't know if you've sent this to the City Council members already, but if you haven't, can you just make sure you send it to us so we can share it with community members as well?
I will. I've sent it to most of you electronically. I've got physical copies, but I will make sure this evening that all of you have it electronically.
Thank you.
Beautiful. And again, we could careless about your GED or felony. We are hiring Hartford humans. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, also too, just on that note, sorry.
Your brother's a dancer, you know. Just saying.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good opportunity to connect with our welcome center as well. So I'll make sure I follow up with that.
Downstairs?
Downstairs, yeah.
Okay, I slipped some stuff under the door last time, but I haven't spoken to anyone there.
Okay. All right. So if you send it to me, I'll make the connection.
Beautiful. Thank you. Peace.
Eddie.
Eddie Hagan back, 170 Sisson Avenue. Three things. Wow. What your council did, what our mayor did, we won the lawsuit. Yay. I am so touched. I must have got poor calls about that, very highly on my phone, and people would say, "Eddie, if you had a hand in that." I said, "Not really," but I was praying the night of the lawsuit, and my councilperson, Glenn Wynn, should be accomplished, because he said we could win the lawsuit. She didn't really know. She said something about, "Let's wait till we win." We did win. So anyway, now let's turn the parcels over to us. Let's quickly. Let's don't wait till they want a resue again. And I read that part of this suit, so I don't want it to happen ever again. I just want to know that we can turn the parcels over to us. Yeah, and I'm very happy whenever we could do that, because we don't want another thing to start, because it says it right in the Harper Current that they might try it again. I said, "I don't think so. I don't think with this long council. I think if we have it in our ballpark, we should work in our favor to keep it with us, and we should try to work with the three or four parcels, like you said, slowly, one at a time." But let's do that, because otherwise, we are going backwards again. The other thing, quickly, is Wethersfield Avenue. What's going on with Wethersfield Avenue? They had a shooting again the other night. So what is it? How come we can't keep crime down? We have an acting chief, which he could stand up and say, "However it happens." But it's been too frequent again. It's been going on and on and on with these people. They just don't understand. And the other thing is, we had a fire in 221 from Sisson Avenue, which was really bad because it displaced neighbors. I don't understand why we can't, or who owns them, doesn't turn around and fix the building over. It's boarded up, so one of my friends have to move, and I just think it's bad at this particular time. This happened at 221 Sisson Avenue, and it's not funny, because I was there the morning it happened, and I said, "Okay, here we go again with another fire." I know the owners of it, so I could tell you briefly who the owners are. You might know the owners anyway, so I just wish they could turn around and fix them. They haven't done anything with them yet. They haven't done anything yet, and they've been displaced. And you know what a displaced means. It's really bad. They have to go to motel, then they've got to try to find a new apartment, which I don't think that's okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Donna Swar.
Donna Swar, H. Schulter Place. Item number 17, ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 2. At the June PRAK meeting, the proposed ordinance amendment was, and use regulated of the municipal code, blah, 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 was reviewed. This ordinance change would allow consumption of alcohol in the parking lot between Colt Park and Dillon Stadium on Hartford Athletic Home Games two hours prior and one hour after the event. I provided some background regarding the initial proposal and the current one. It was believed that the ordinance amendment was going to be passed on June 24th, and as such, a copy of the proposal was not provided at the June 25th PRAK meeting. This is the reason why there were many abstentions. A vote was taken, and it did pass, to support the change to the ordinance. Four yays, one opposed, and six abstentions. A copy of the current proposal was requested to be sent and was sent out to the PRAK commissioners on the 26th, and we have not received any complaints or comments since it was sent out. Friends of Colt Park, several of you are aware that I've had numerous conversations in person via email about this resolution. My initial reaction, that was once again due to the mayor's last-minute submission. It didn't allow for thoughtful consideration by the City Council, PWPRNE Committee, the Friends of Colt Park, nor the Park and Rec Advisory Commission. CisCon NRZ historically has not met in July or August, so in effect, they too have been sidelined. We've known about this July 13th opening for a very long time. I do not find it acceptable that matters from the mayor's office are not managed to allow for the democratic process to work. The Friends of Colt Park recommended that for this year's games, waivers were sought by HSG rather than the amendment. This would allow for the neighborhood to experience a tailgating before the amendment. Both Hanging Hills and Hooker Brewery will lose business as a result, and the residents will be impacted. Their sleepy neighborhood is going to be transformed into a bustling, car-choked, and tailgater experience across the street from where they live. There are four units that have one bedroom, 12 units that have two bedrooms, at the Dillon Place Apartments. There are 10 houses which are single and multifamily dwellings on Kirkhamby. The Friends of Colt Park are reconciled with the amendment to the ordinance to limit the number of times tailgating will take place to approximately 20 times a year by restricting these events to when the professional soccer games will be held. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom Swar.
Tom Swar, H. Schulter Place. Last March, I shared with this council violations that had occurred during the election for the Democratic Town Committee, 4th District. I advised you at that time, I was filing a formal complaint with the State Election Enforcement Commission, and I would follow it through to ensure a full investigation. I'm here tonight to make sure all of you are aware that the SEC did rule in June and issued a $750 civil penalty against our Democratic registrar and her moderator. I don't care if the problem is personnel that are incapable of learning the laws governing our elections, or they're willing to subvert those laws to curry favor with those who appointed them. I'm asking the council to take a more proactive role in ensuring the integrity of our elections. Tonight, I want to focus on turnout, because I think greater participation is the best strategy for ensuring no more embarrassing fiascos with our elections. I wanted to congratulate Councilman Clark tonight as the top vote getter of all the councilmen. He was supported by a whopping 13% of our voters. The mayor did a little bit better. He pulled in 15% of the voters. And I'm being generous with these percentages, because I didn't count the 7,800 registered voters that are listed as inactive. Only 19% of our active voters bothered to even cast a ballot in our last municipal election in 2015. My wife and I have lived in Hartford for 15 years in the South End. We love the city. We can walk to great restaurants, to the theater, to parks, and incredible library. The diversity, art, culture, and community that is Hartford is absolutely incredible, but the city faces tough decisions to recover from years of fiscal mismanagement. Tough decisions are going to be particularly challenging for a government that's supported by less than 13% of the people. We need a government, we need a council and an administration that's actually supported by a majority of the voters. I'm urging the council, and particularly the Democratic slate, to put as much energy into voter turnout as you put into the maneuvering for the party endorsements from the town committees. We need a more responsive and representative government. Thank you.
Leslie Hammond.
Leslie Hammond, Winland In Place. Thank you, those of you that are here, and thanks to the public that's here. I love hearing from you all. A few things. I'm very concerned that Kelly Baraga is still out without being paid, and every time the mayor and others turn around, they are so excited that she got so many new officers in Hartford, and she gets, you know, credited with a lot of that hard work that brought a diverse group of new Hartford police officers. But she is home without pay. Sergeant Thode, who made the complaint against her, a DTC member, is still working, and maybe has a hearing some point. Who knows? Who cares? Acting Chief Thode was the one that did the eternal affairs investigation, so can we really trust him to do anything about this? I have not heard anything from anybody about this. It's very concerning. Patterson Park Conservancy, we are meeting with Matt Ritter. I don't know what happened. He reached out to some of you, and I don't know if it's because we wanted the meeting to be public, it kind of fell on its face. I don't know what happened, but that's very concerning, too. Neil, an attorney, has gotten a nonprofit status. We're ready to go. Here it is, summer. A beach is 20 minutes away for Hartford families. It would be awesome if we had a beach for them to go to. We're willing to raise the money. The city doesn't have to pay any money, and it just seems to be stuck. So I don't know if you all and the mayor have a plan. You're not telling us about it. It feels that way. It's, again, the lack of transparency that was alluded to before. The housing gathering that Claudine and the working families, she walked in just in time, did was awesome. It was great to be face-to-face with people and to really talk about real issues. There were a couple reporters there, which was great. So that's the kind of thing I personally, as a citizen, love to see and would love to see more of. There's been so much discussion about affordable housing, what's affordable. You know, I went up to Willow Creek, and they said they have a two- to three-year waiting list for two-bedroom apartments that are $9.50 a month, two- to three-year waiting list. So do we have enough affordable? We don't have decent affordable? People like new? I don't know. I'd like to hear more about that, because it's an ongoing discussion that doesn't really seem to have a lot of facts behind it. So thank you for your time.
Daniel Anderson.
My name is O'Neil Anderson, also Hartford, City Hartford resident. Work for Public Works, but there's a lot going on. Today, we just find out there is, one of my coworker job has been out for bid. We're going to private the front-end loader, the guy trashed out that service on the school and the libraries, so that job is out, and the closing date is the 3rd of July. So no one know where is that yet, if anyone win that bid. Can you hear me?
Can you speak into the mic?
Okay, okay, okay. So there is, I just found out there was a bidding for front-end hauling for this Hartford Public Schools waste collection. So the city of Hartford are looking for a company to haul trash away from the Hartford Public Schools, and I just found it out today. You guys familiar with that?
Councilwoman Winch?
Yes, I'm familiar with the RFR 5889, but it was, I believe it was a service that was done at the Board of Ed. Is that, are you saying that it's taken away, a job away from the Hartford city side?
Yes, from one of my coworkers, yes. So it's one of my coworker. He was doing that job.
He was performing that job right now?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
So he didn't know until this morning that his job was under trapping blacks. So there is no communication, no, no. We're still having a lot of issue over there with the waste trucks. It's not being worked on. So, a lot of trucks are being down, so I'm not even know if you guys familiar with that. So, time is getting hot, and working in truck with no ACs. It's very bad condition over there right now, and there is no one to talk to. I just run for Vice President for the union, try to make changes, I want. So, I'm trying to step up, and I need to get between the bottom of everything that's going on in the city with Public Works, because, like I said, who's in charge? They're not, they're not telling you guys, are bringing those attention to you guys, because we are helpless. There is no one helping us.
Councilwoman Winch?
Yeah, we have our Labor Committee meeting coming up on Thursday at 6 o'clock, so I asked the union president and the department leadership to be present at that meeting to discuss some of these issues that you're talking about right now. So, if you can be here Thursday at 6 o'clock, greatly appreciated, and I'm listening to you.
Okay, okay. All right, so, that's it for tonight, just a little concern.
Thank you. So, with that, is there anyone else that wanted to comment tonight that didn't get a chance to sign in? Okay, if not, that concludes our public comment section. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you. Okay, good evening. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled council meeting. We will officially open up the meeting. Thank you all for joining us in the audience tonight, and thank you all for viewing and at home. Mr. Kirk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Present.
Councilman Clark.
Councilman Deutsch.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Councilwoman Gale.
Here.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Present.
Councilman Sanchez.
Councilwoman Thames.
Present.
Councilwoman Winch.
Here.
We have a corner, Madam President.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, before we jump into our business agenda, we do have a few points of personal privilege from our council members, so we will kick it off with Councilwoman Winch.
All right. If I could ask Pastor AJ Johnson to come forward. This is a young man who I actually literally watched grow up in the city of Hartford. He could be one of Hartford's own success stories. From college to community, to chaplain in the fire department, to marriage with an entire family of his own, and pastor in the church that his father founded, one of Hartford's own. Now Pastor AJ Johnson, serving his fifth year as a pastor. Can you imagine that? Seemed like it was just yesterday we were sitting up here and get hip and get a grip. So, we just want, on behalf of the city of Hartford, we are so proud, I mean, really so proud.
For all your work and all your dedication and everything done, Pastor Johnson is a lifelong president of the city of Hartford.
As Pastor Johnson also is an advocate for fair housing opportunities and anti-landlord legislation, whereas Pastor AJ Johnson has served as pastor of Urban Hope Refuge Church in Hartford's North End for the past five years with distinction. And therefore, be it resolved that the city of Hartford, the Court of Common Council, and its residents salute Pastor AJ Johnson for his accomplishments and pray you have much success in the future. We want to thank also Dr. Johnson for sharing your baby with us.
Sure. Yeah, no, super short. Arjo, thank you so much. Thank you to the council, council president. Awesome, thank you so much. Tonight, I really appreciate this, but what I'm most excited about, my nephew is here from California, and his mother, and my, and we call her D-Money. We just went, call her D-Money. But I'm just honored to have a family here tonight that came all the way from California. Can we just give them a good Hartford welcome? And if they can come up, if they can come up, my niece Cheyenne, just really quickly, just really quick, really quick, I'm just honored. And if you look at my nephew, if you know my father, if you know who my father is in the city of Hartford, you know that that is a splitting reflection of what my father, what my father looks like. So, I am just... Get up here, buddy.
Okay, next we have the minority leader and Councilwoman Fox.
Tonight, we have the distinguished pleasure of honoring someone who's been remarkable in the city of Hartford. If we could have Fire Captain Shelley, Shelley L. Carter, please come up. Thank you.
This citation is in recognition of the amazing work that she has done, and especially in her recent promotion, so I'm just going to read directly from it. Your achievements in the Hartford Fire Department and for being the first African-American woman to be promoted to Fire Captain. You have showed great commitment to the safety and well-being of the residents of Hartford by founding the Girls Future Firefighter Camp, GFFC. You have helped empower many young ladies to think outside of the box and inspire them to venture into careers of public service. For all of your accomplishments, the Court of Common Council and its citizens of Hartford honor you as an exemplary member of the Hartford community. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
He is my source, but my family, my husband, my children, my family, my sister who is here, who also works for the city of Hartford, and my mom, who worked for the city for 25 years. I'm just so grateful for them for being my rock and my sister being right by my side when I need her. I would be remiss to not mention the women and the workers. Zondra Clay, what? Oh, there's other... Save the way for me to be standing here, so I love, I love the fire department. I love my job. I love knowing that I am going to influence someone to not only become a better citizen, to become a better human. That's my goal in this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, we have one last one, which I will present. This is a program that the mayor's office, along with council, introduced back in March or April, so we've been doing it for a few months now, where we acknowledge unsung heroes in our community, and acknowledging Volunteers of the Month with respect to, you know, them being nominated from their peers. So, these are individuals from the community, residents, neighbors, that are acknowledging their fellow citizens on the work that they're doing in the community. So, this month, we will be acknowledging Ms. Willie Bell Johnson, if you can come up, please. With your beautiful black and gold dress. So, again, Mrs. Johnson has been a long-life resident of the city of Hartford. She has been a homeowner in the Blue Hills community and has been committed to her church and her spiritual leadership, and particularly as her career volunteer with Lift Every Voice and Sing, which is a nonprofit organization in the city that uses various arts and spirituality to express the Word of God and promote that to the community. If you've never been, they have fabulous concerts in Bushnell Park and do various events throughout the year in support of our youth and the community. So, thank you all, to the Leave Us group for your support, and mainly thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your dedication, oh, I'm dropping things, and commitment to Hartford through your service, not only through Leave Us, but everything else that you do. So, with that, I have two citations that I want to present to you. One on behalf of the Court of Common Council. We have an official citation presented to you, Ms. Willie Bell Johnson. On behalf of the city of Hartford, Court of Common Council, congratulations on being selected as the city of Hartford's Volunteer of the Month for June 2019. The Court of Common Council would like to thank you for your numerous contributions and commitment to the greater Hartford community. Your leadership will have a positive impact on many generations to come. And the next citation is from the mayor that I will present on his behalf, and again, it's presented to Ms. Willie Bell Johnson. Be it hereby known to all that I hereby offer my sincerest congratulations and recognition of your many years of leadership, service, and advocacy for our youth in the arts in Hartford. We recognize the importance of your organizations like Leave Us, Lift Every Voice and Sing, both in creating opportunities for our young people and developing programs for artistic expression. From scholarships to competitions, you have supported them all. For this and many more reasons, we are proud to honor you as our July 2019 Volunteer of the Month, city of Hartford. Thank you, Mayor Luke Bronin. Thank you.
I'd like this for my group to stand, that came with me, support.
These are the peoples that really, this already helped me, encouraged me. Okay, thank you. It's always wonderful to start our meeting off with such great community involvement and recognition, so thank you all, and thank you to all of you, congratulations again for being honored, but for all the work that you do. So, Mr. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening. First off, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add item 21 to our agenda tonight, which is item four from the agenda of June 10th, a resolution accepting an award of $65,000 to support green infrastructure efforts here in the city. And I would just note that this matter has also been discharged by the committee to which it was sent on June 10th, which is the Parks, Public Works, Parks and Environment Committee, by its chair, Minority Leader Bermudez.
Thank you. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yes.
Councilman Clark, Councilman Deutsch, Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Gale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Yes.
Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Thames.
Yes.
Councilwoman Winch.
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to put the following items on the consent calendar, items number two, number 17, number 18, and the recently added number 21.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yes.
Councilman Clark, Councilman Deutsch, Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Gale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Yes.
Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Thames.
Yes.
Councilwoman Winch.
Yes.
Pass.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion that we receive item seven.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. No, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yes.
Councilman Clark, Councilman Deutsch, Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Gale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Yes.
Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Thames.
Yes.
Councilwoman Winch.
Yes.
Pass.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to refer the following items to the following committees, after which Minority Leader will provide a description of each matter. Item number three to the Public Works, Parks, and Environment Committee. Item number four to the Labor Education, Workforce, and Youth Development Committee. Item number five to the Operations Management Budget and Government Accountability Committee. Item number six to the Public Works, Parks, and Environment Committee. Item number 19 to the Operations Management Budget and Government Accountability Committee, and item number 20 to the Labor Education, Workforce, and Youth Development Committee, as well as to the Operations Management Budget and Government Accountability Committee.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Minority Leader, you have the floor.
Item number three, resolution to allow the city to enter into a license agreement with Channel 3 Kids Camp for operating the annual holiday lights Fantasia at Goodwin Park. Item number four, resolution to authorize the application to accept a grant from What Works Cities to participate in the Providence Talks replication. Item number five, resolution to authorize the write-off of the filing receivables from 2007 or earlier, effective June 30th, 2019, which were deemed uncollectible. Item number six, resolution adopting the Capitol Region of Council of Governments Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2019 through 2024. Item number 19, resolution requesting an allocation of $335,000 judgment regarding center plan be transferred from the General Fund or the Office of Corporation Council to the Department of Public Works. Item number 20, resolution requesting a 2% increase to executive assistants currently serving, effective July 1, 2019.
Any discussion on the referred items? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yes.
Councilman Clark, Councilman Deutsch, Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Gale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Yes.
Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Thames.
Yes.
Councilwoman Winch.
Yes.
Items are referred.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to postpone the following items until our next council meeting, which will be on August 12th, 2019. Those are items number eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion on the referred items? Oh, sorry, postponed items. Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yes.
Councilman Clark, Councilman Deutsch, Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Gale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Yes.
Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Thames.
Yes.
Councilwoman Winch.
Yes.
Items are postponed.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion that we go into executive session to consider item number one on the agenda.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yes.
Councilman Clark, Councilman Deutsch, Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Gale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Yes.
Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Thames.
Yes.
Councilwoman Winch.
Yes.
Pass.
All right, we will recess while we go into executive session and reconvene shortly. Thank you.
Correct.
Majority Leader, you have the floor.
A move that we come out of executive session.
Can I have a second? Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yes.
Councilman Clark, Councilman Deutsch, Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Gale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Yes.
Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Thames.
Yes.
Councilwoman Winch.
Yes.
We have a corner.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion that we take action on item number one. I make a motion that we take action on item number one, which is the approval of a settlement with Nikita Waller.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yes.
Councilman Clark. Councilman Deutsch. Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Gale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado.
Yes.
Councilman Sanchez. Councilwoman Thames.
Yes.
Councilwoman Winch.
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you. And so, that concludes our evening and our meeting for the night. Thank you all for joining us in the audience, and thank you all for viewing and at home. We will see you at our next meeting, if not before. Thank you. Good night.